I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 21, 2023. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather.
Here.
And Commissioner Bennett is absent.
Terrific. Commissioner Starkweather, if you'd lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Lucas, do you have any suggested changes to the agenda?
I do not.
Thank you. All right, then next up is Public Communications. Do we have any speaker cards tonight?
We've forgotten.
I think there are.
It's like Christmas. All right, next on the agenda is Public Communications, the time set aside during the commission meeting for people to talk about items that are not on tonight's agenda. So I'm looking here, number three, number three.
That's a lot.
Three, three, DRP 22-016, I take that's number three also. Okay, so I don't have any speaker cards for public comment. Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda? Any item of city business. All right, Sherry, do we have anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised?
We do not.
All right, very good. We'll move on then to the consent items, the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, May 17 and June 7. Do any commissioners have refinements to those minutes?
No.
If not, I'd like to have a motion for approval.
I move approval of the May 17 and the June 7 minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, please call roll on items one and two.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Terrific. Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. This is disclosure by any commissioners of site visits and ex parte contacts for items on the agenda. Mr. Starkweather.
I drove by the property, but I have not talked to anybody related to the project.
I walked the property. I have not spoken to any of the applicants.
And I walked the property, drove by the property, ran into one of the neighbors, but we didn't necessarily talk about the specifics of the project.
Okay, and I have visited the project or the property as well, had no ex parte contacts. Let's move on then to our first public hearing item. And for those here present and in TV land that are not familiar with the process here, we're going to have a report from staff on this case. Then we will have the opportunity to hear from the applicants. Then, and we can ask questions both of staff and of the applicants. Then we will have public comments, so others not specifically a part of the case have an opportunity to speak typically with a three-minute limit on your remarks. And at the conclusion of that, we'll close the public hearing again, and we will deliberate on the case. So, staff?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi and Commissioners. This project, DRP 22-016 and Tree Permit 23-014, is a project located at 380 Longhorn Lane. This project is the proposed construction of a single-story, single-family residence, including an attached, single-story, two-car garage and detached, two-story accessory dwelling unit. I'll be referring to it now as an ADU. As proposed, the project meets all of the development standards within the municipal code, and the details are included in your packet in the staff report. The Planning Commission does not usually review tree permits. However, as part of this project, there is a proposed removal of a valley oak and construction within the drip line of two valley oaks, so staff tied the tree report into tonight's meeting. The property is approximately two and a half acres and includes approximately 10,000 square feet of 500-year flood zone area at the rear of the property and a slope of over 15% at the front of the property, which somewhat limits the building area in the center there. The main residence is set down and back of 52 feet from the property line where 40 feet is required. The south side yard setback is proposed to be 33 and a half feet. That's to the proposed ADU where 25 feet is required. During the review process, there were concerns that came up regarding privacy and a shared tree in relation to this two-story ADU. These were expressed by the neighbor adjacent to the south. The applicant adjusted the plan by raising the bottom of the second story, south-facing windows to five feet above the floor in the subject room, which is an office, in order to address the privacy concern. Regarding the concerns about the shared tree, the arborist concludes that the plans aim to encroach less than 15% into the tree protection zone, which is generally considered manageable for healthy oak trees. Background of the project includes, this is a vacant site within an established homeowners association, and the homeowners association has provided their approval for the project as proposed. The proposed development includes an approximately 4,800 square feet single-story ranch-style, single-family residence inclusive of an attached 450 square feet single-story two-car garage and an approximately 1,100 square feet detached, two-story accessory dwelling unit. The subject site is less than four acres in size, making it a legal non-conforming parcel in regards to lot size. The site adjacent to the south, as well as the one adjacent to its south, include two-story, single-family residences. Further south, there's a mix of single and two-story residences as well. All of the structures in this neighborhood present unique architectural styles. As with the proposed project, the structures on the west side of the street, same side, are set back and down from the street on these sloping properties as the one that's proposed here today. The Planning Commission is charged with review and determination of the design review permit for this project pursuant to 10-2.3003 of the Ojai Municipal Code, as all applications for building permits which include a proposed second story are subject to review and consideration by the Planning Commission. The Commission is also charged with review and determination of the design review permit pursuant to Section 10-2.1102, as all development on slopes greater than 15% or 15% or greater are also subject to review and determination by the Planning Commission. The design standards of the municipal code by which all projects must be evaluated include context, which relates to the materials, colors, textures, styles, mass and scale, all of these things being compatible with the architectural character and form of the surrounding area, continuity with the streetscape with regard to setbacks, scale with regard to height transitions between neighboring buildings, and architecture that piques interest as opposed to monotonous elevations. The municipal code also includes hillside development standards with specific criteria, some of which include that structures should be located in the most accessible, least visually prominent and most geologically stable portions of the site, and designing residential development on infill hillside parcels that is a scale that's compatible with the existing adjacent development, and including that designed to be to locate windows, balconies, and any other outdoor living area that considers privacy of adjacent dwellings and yards where that's feasible. This property slopes down towards the rear of the site away from Longhorn Lane. The elevation varies from approximately 736 to 721 feet within the first 40 feet of the site. The main house has a finished floor elevation of 720 feet. The ADU has a finished floor of 715 feet. Therefore, the main house is set back and down from the street elevation, as is the ADU. The site continues to slope down towards that 500-year flood zone at the rear of the site where the elevation is down at about 685 feet. So you have, okay, something, I didn't do this. In the meantime, right here, what I wanted to do was show you the proposed streetscape, which is here, that I've been describing, but I'm going to bounce to the next slide, which shows you the, how do I get to the next slide? Thank you. The next slide, which shows you the site plan that I've also been describing. And now, however, I want to describe to you three extra 11-by-17 plans that you have in front of you that you are seeing for the first time tonight, because in anticipation of potential Ventura County Fire Department requirements that were just recently discovered by the applicant regarding site development, the applicant has provided an alternative plan, and that's what you have before you, and that's what you're seeing here is a site plan, and it's locating the accessory dwelling unit more than 15 feet outside of the drip line of the shared oak tree, which is on the southern side yard property line. The relocation brings the structure in towards the main residence and forward toward the front property line. Let's see, this is, okay, I wasn't sure if I, I didn't want to move it. I wanted to see if I could point to things. That's okay. The revised plan does not modify the floor area or height of the structure, only the location, which would continue to meet the side and front yard setbacks. The south side yard setback would increase from the currently proposed 33 and a half feet, which is required to be 25 feet, to over 39 feet. The setback from the front property line would change from what's now proposed at approximately 105 feet to just shy of 58 feet. The requirement is 40 feet. I'm going to show you here, the next slide is going to be better. Okay, the center drawing on this slide shows you the alternative streetscape, and this is what one would see from the street, because the development is down and back and below, on the backside of the hill. The single-family house is in the same location in this picture as is in your packet. However, the ADU, which is to the south, to the left on this picture, is now in the alternative location, which is closer to the street. Staff came here tonight recommending approval of the originally proposed plan, however, is also in support of the revised plan. Both comply with the development standards set forth in the municipal code regarding height, hillside development standards, as well as the regular design development standards. And thank you, and if you have any questions, thanks. Okay?
I see that we have a gas meter and a gas hot water, and I'm wondering.
Is your mic on?
Sorry. I see on these plans that there's a gas meter and a gas hot water heater and probably more, and I'm wondering how that does not, how that meets the REACH Code law.
It does not meet the REACH Code. The requirement for the REACH Code is it'd be all-electric.
Exactly, so.
Thank you. The plans in your packet, if they have any gas lines on them, they are to be removed. And we've gone back and forth with a couple of revisions, and.
Okay, there still are.
Okay, the applicant is fully aware that they will not be able to have gas, and they will also be conditioned to comply with the REACH Code.
Okay, thank you.
John, questions for staff?
Yeah, but they're related to the original design, not necessarily to the revised plans.
That's appropriate?
Yes, that's appropriate, yeah, absolutely.
So in the original plans, I noticed that we had some, we had some, we outlined issues related to the tree mitigation and trying to take care of the trees that are on the site. And there's a lot of recommendations coming from one particular arborist. I was just wondering if both arborists' conditions were included in that original plan?
The arborist that was hired by the applicant provided an arborist report and tree protection plan, and those conditions are a part of your resolution.
So those conditions are in there?
Yes.
Okay. Another quick question. I do see, I did see a condition based on Ventura County Fire Review. If Ventura County Fire Review came back and said that they had to trim the tree 30%, could we then deny the permit on the original plan?
That's the shared, the shared tree that was.
Shared tree.
You're talking about the protected oak?
Location of the ADU.
Yeah, if Ventura County Fire comes back and says you have to prune the tree up to 30% of the canopy to make this work, would they, because they wouldn't deny the permit, they would just say this is what you have to do. But could we then deny the permit?
So, well, that would not be the, what is that, the way things, that the proposal is here before you tonight, and you would be making a decision, and the fire department would not be making that type of determination until it's going through the building permit process. Our conditions of approval do say that the project is required to comply with fire department requirements that are, have been adopted by the city. I don't know if that's the exact language. And the applicant provided the alternative because of potential.
Yeah, this was not considered the alternative.
Right, well, and they came up with the alternative, or they proposing an alternative because it has come to light that there may be, there are potentially going to be conditions placed on them by the fire department in which it wouldn't be appropriate to have the ADU where it's currently located.
Okay, all right. Then should we even consider the original proposal?
I'm going to let Lucas talk about that.
In deliberations, we can, we can move to accept one or the other.
Okay.
And that would be appropriate. Mr. Starkweather, any questions for staff?
There was a letter here from some, I guess it's neighbors, Andy and Sigrid Bresler, and they raised four concerns. I see two of them are definitely addressed. You have a response to the one about scale of the ADU, and the other was about noise from.
It's been mitigated.
Pool, has that been mitigated? Oh, okay. So those are all been mitigated?
The last one is.
So as far as the scale, the staff report, staff feels that the development as proposed complies with the municipal code in context, context, continuity, scale, and architecture with the surrounding neighborhood. So it's not that it's, so we feel, staff feels that it does comply.
Okay. My only question had to do with the potential fire department regulations, and maybe you could talk about that just a little bit more. You said earlier, before the meeting started, that some of, some of the regulations may take effect, we don't know yet for sure, next month, but none of them presumably have yet been accepted by the city council. So as we sit here tonight deliberating on the case, do we take those into account or not?
I'm going to pass that on to the director.
So we asked that question of the building official, because it is an interesting question that was brought forward to us by Ventura County Fire recently. And what we've found and what's been identified is that building standards would certainly be within the realm of discussion before city council and probably before another board that's also reviews and considers matters regarding building.
The council has, has accepted some, but not all, of the fire department's.
Right.
Proposed standards, and I'm just wondering where we stand with this, that could be a problem if it came to be.
Building standards only. If these are not building standards, then it wouldn't be within the parameters of potential modifications to our code through city council and BAB. So it remains to be seen whether or not those are building standards, or if they are in fact fire department regulations, which are then addressed through the fire marshal. So that, that's why we're saying maybe versus shall. At the end of the day, the conditions that we have here are standard conditions for fire department, which are true for larger additions, like we saw with projects here recently, or new construction on vacant lots. We've got three standard conditions, and those standard conditions weigh on each of those applications, this one included, evenly. It's even-handed, you got to come in, comply, and then bring that forward before we issue permits. So that process hasn't changed.
Okay. And there, I can't remember, oh, there it is. Yeah, it's Condition 26 in the resolution. All conditions of the Fire Prevention Division of the Ventura County Fire District shall be met only to the extent these standards apply in the city of Ojai.
Correct.
And whether they apply or not is up to the city council. And, and if these are new regulations or proposed regulations, the city council does not have yet the opportunity to decide if they apply. But so, so how do, how do we, what is the context for the timing of this application? I know when it's ADUs, if it's an ADU conversion, then one has to establish the time at which that ADU was created from some other structure, and the code at that date is what applies. And so I'm trying to figure out what code applies to this application tonight.
Yeah, so there's two ways to answer this, and I'll have Legal correct me if I'm wrong here. The first way is if it's identified as a specific date, then anything beyond that becomes, these are the standards that apply moving forward. So for instance, as of such-and-such date, anything moving forward would then require compliance with such-and-such regulations, right?
Okay.
The second is substantial construction, meaning the regulations come into play, but we're still in plan check. Guess what? You've got to change your plans to be compliant with the new regulations. There's not a hard date to say, okay, this is, this is the line that's been drawn in the sand. You still need to comply regardless of the date and play. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I think that sounds right. I would just elaborate on that, is that, you know, staff works at the direction of the city council, and so if something isn't in plan check and is accomplishable, they'll, they'll work toward, to get that done. Does that make sense?
Okay, but the, the, let's call it the problematic potential standards here. Have they been mitigated by moving this structure?
That is up to the fire department to identify that. But in looking at and having a conversation, it does appear as if they're meeting that standard. But again, it's not up for, for this commission or for staff to make that determination. That is really the fire department providing their stamp and seal of approval.
Okay, but.
What they're trying to do, what really the applicant is trying to do is to essentially provide that, that compliance through fire department, given these standards that have been laid out to them pretty late in the game.
Okay, but whichever, whichever the site plans we might decide to accept or approve tonight, they're still subject to future change by the fire department, it sounds like.
In terms of compliance with fire department standards, yes.
Okay. Not anything we can do about that, I suspect. Any other questions for staff? All right, let's hear from the applicant then. Is the applicant here?
I'm not the applicant, I'm the designer, and I help manage the construction.
Can you come up?
Someone who's speaking for the project.
Yeah.
Can you just say, say your name and your company name, please?
Sure. My name's Lisa Oberst. My company's Lisa Oberst Design, and I'm an interior designer working on the project, and I also assist in managing the construction on behalf of Ron and Katie Kano, who are the applicants.
Are you affiliated with Soder Studio?
I'm not. He is our landscape architect.
Ah, okay. Very good. Proceed, please.
We just want to thank the city. They've been really great to work with in helping us understand the codes and the nuances of your city. I'm from Los Angeles. I've never worked in Ojai before, so I just want to thank them for being so great and so sharing with us of information. In light of your discussion about which plan to approve, we really would like to move forward with our initial submittal to the city. We understand we need to comply to VCFD and whatever they may deem necessary in terms of, you know, getting out of the drip line or cutting the canopy back, whatever percentage. So we're, we've presented the alternate plan. In case that comes up, we wanted you to know that, you know, we have a, we have an alternate perspective and plan to meet compliance if, if we need to. But essentially, we would love to move forward with the first iteration of our submittal, which is to keep the ADU where it is.
Okay, and, and then if, if they come a cropper of, of a new fire regulation, this is just a change to the design?
This, we would see a change, a revision to the design during the building permit process, and the director would make a determination as to the severity or lack thereof. If we're looking at the same materials, you know, if nothing has changed except location and they're still in compliance with all of the municipal code requirements, it very possibly would be.
Sounds like a minor change.
Would be a minor change and would be reviewed at staff levels.
Okay, very good. I suspected that was the case, but prefer to hear it from staff.
And if I can mention something else about the ADU, I know there's been some neighboring comments about where we have the ADU located, and the, the property is very large, and we took that into consideration while we were thoughtfully doing the architecture and where that ADU should go. And, you know, the bottom portion of the property is in the flood zone, and, you know, we have the yard and the house, and the ADU sort of situated so they all look into one another. So that's the best place for the ADU. If it was flipped to the other side of the house, which is the upper portion of the house, but the opposite side on Buckboard Lane, then they're closer to traffic. They have very small children, and so, you know, this is a vacation house for them. They're going to be here not super frequently, but when, you know, Mr. Kano is working, he would like to be able to see his kids playing in the yard and get the beauty, you know, of the mountains of Ojai. So we very thoughtfully located the ADU, very carefully considering, you know, noise of traffic, neighbor privacy, and, and the most appropriate location on the lot based on what the lot is actually made up of. So I just wanted to mention that.
How you intend to use that ADU, unless it's for a short-term rental, which here's no-no.
Yeah.
It's not really any of our business.
Right. But I just wanted to comment on what, what our intent was in, in the architecture and why it is where we put it, where we put it.
It looked to me, when I was there today, that where you have relocated the ADU to is, has more slope than if you had simply pushed the ADU back toward the middle of the lot. Is, is that how you see it?
The problem is where the tree sits. So if we're pushing it back towards the middle of the lot, then we're pushing closer to the tree and have to go further down, which puts us in that flood zone.
Okay, the flood zone comes that far up?
I don't know the precise location of it, but it pushes us closer to where that flood zone is. And so the option, if we had to with the fire department, would be to push it up closer to the house. to the house and not have an issue potentially with being close to that flood zone. And also, you know, how the house would be most enjoyable to a family and cohesive in terms of circulation and how people would move around the house and entertain in that yard. But primarily, it was placed where it was placed because of the flood zone.
Okay.
Are you constructing anything in the flood zone?
I'm sorry?
Are you constructing anything in the flood zone?
No, just any, you know, landscaping we need to do on the property, but there's gonna be no construction. They wanted, they're from the east coast primarily, and they really wanted to construct this with as much yard as possible for the kids to run around and play.
I noted, as I was looking at the drawings, that there will be a considerable amount of grading to be done here, taking it from the upper parts of the slope. Are you then, are you building retaining walls or something to hold the soil that you move lower down the slope?
Yes.
And it'll be walled and compacted and all of that?
Yep, yep. And our general contractor is here, and he can maybe speak more on that if you want to talk about the specifics of what happens when it's graded and what retaining walls are included in our plan.
I just remember people's yards sliding downhill sides in Southern Orange County
Yes, I remember that also.
And we kinda like to avoid that.
Yeah, we have footings and retaining walls, and we have a pool, and so, all of those things will be properly constructed so that it would mitigate any of the issue of, you know, land moving.
And when you, did you guys, on the ADU where your initial plan is near the tree, I think the design was to grade it about 10 feet down?
Mm-hmm.
Would that impact the roots of the tree?
So, per our arborist, and he's gonna be on-site when anything is happening with the tree, he said, no, it will not. It doesn't mean no it ever, it never could, but it won't kill the tree, is essentially, I think, what you're asking. I don't know what percentage of the root
That was the 15% business?
I think so, yes.
Oh, that was the roots, and then the 15% is the canopy itself.
15% is the canopy.
Oh, okay.
So, it could impact both the roots and the canopy.
Yeah, yeah.
I can comment on that.
Okay.
If you can go up there.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great, yeah.
If you wish to address the commission, you should do it from there. Yes, sir.
So, I've done work in areas
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Chris Furcaron from Coast to Custom Homes. I've done quite a bit of work around trees like this, and trees are very valuable in California, I understand that. And typically, in this situation, we'll have an arborist on-site when we're digging around that tree. And if we encounter a root, typically, we'll stop, you know, the arborist is there, he can put eyes on it, and he'll say, you can cut this root, this is what you can do, this is what you cannot do. And, you know, obviously, we're all very sensitive to that. Nobody, even from a, not even environmentalist point, but from a owner's point that we're working for, they don't want to see that tree die. You know, we're working, we've put site walls next to them, and it's very, you have to be very careful. I mean, it's almost like you're in the Raiders of the Lost Ark, and you're out there with a little brush getting the dirt around from the roots, just make sure you're looking at this root that, you know, it could be a root from another tree, too. So, that's why you have to have an arborist on-site to do this. So, that's, I just want to say that, that I have experience in it, my team has experience in it, that we've done this quite a bit, and it's doable.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Chair Quillisi?
Yes, sir.
I believe the arborist that wrote the report is here. It might be helpful to have him speak on the matter.
Let's hear from the arborist then.
Our arborist who wrote the report is
Oh, okay. Which arborist is here?
Oh, okay, he is here.
Unless his name has changed, I believe he is here.
I didn't see him. I met him in person, so I didn't
Come on down, as the emcee said.
Shake hands with the people you're working with. And this is Michael?
Hi.
Yeah?
Hello, everyone.
Michael, if you could identify yourself, please?
Michael Anaba, Anaba Horticulture LLC. I'm the arborist who wrote that report.
And full disclosure, Mr. Anaba has done work for me in my yard.
Has done work right now?
No, he's not. It was years ago.
Well, it's good to know.
To the point that the general was bringing up earlier, Michael, could you speak to the tree and the roots and the typical practices that happen here in Ojai and what I've seen, and I think what staff and the commission has seen in terms of previous practices as you approach roaches, roots that are larger inside, not roaches?
Roaches are good for trees.
In terms of how you handle that situation on-site?
I'll speak to the good side of things, if I might. I know that there are a lot of experiences that people have seen where it's not such a good tree protection scenario. On the good side of things, I've done several projects with very large trees, very big projects. And if we want to take the tree protections up a notch, we can go from backhoe to hand digging, for instance. So, there are all these degrees of how do you do the work? When do you do the work? What do you do during that work to minimize the impact of the tree? So, if we take a step back from actually excavating and looking for those roots, the first thing that we would do in preparation for excavation would be to pre-irrigate that tree. Once you start digging in the root zone, the fine absorbing roots that are about the size of your hair, those are broken. They can be broken underfoot as you walk through, you know, the root zone. So, the root hairs get fractured. When they're fractured, they don't absorb much water and carry it up to the canopy where it's needed. So, we pre-irrigate, let the tree have a good, long drink. We know that this year, all the trees had a good, long drink already, and it's a good sign that this tree is stable and doing well. So, once it's pre-irrigated, we can start probing, looking for roots. When you find those significant roots, you can trace them, find where they're going. And generally, for trees like this on a slope, you're gonna find more roots going downhill than uphill, because that follows the course of water, gravity. And so, having the ADU, whatever we're gonna call that structure, near that upslope corner, I don't anticipate finding many large roots. At that distance from a tree like this, a large root would be three inches, maybe three and a half inches. And a tree of that proportion could tolerate losing one or two of those roots. We've done it many times. The trees are fine 10, 15, 20 years later. So, there have been a lot of speculations about what would happen to the tree by locating the ADU there. I think many of those speculations were a reach. They were not stated on honest evidence, honest standards. And if we look at the actual standards and the actual location and the actual, you know, situation, the pruning that's required and the root impact that's required is very manageable.
I got a question. Oh, okay. In your report, which you provided for us, thank you, detachment C, page 414, you provided a little background of the project, and you did note that tree three, which is the tree we're talking about,
Uh-huh.
Says to comply with Ventura County Fire Department clearance requirements, it will go beyond basic cleaning and maintenance pruning.
Yes.
So, how invasive would that pruning be?
Not very, actually. So, for a mature valley oak, basic care entails cleaning deadwood, conflicting or diseased branches. We try to keep the tree healthy, basically. Other than that, you don't have to do much structural pruning. The trees are nicely structured on their own. In a case like this where you propose to put something next to the tree, then the fire department does have a standard of keeping branches five feet away from the roof. New standards can increase that distance to 10 feet, but do not increase it to 15 feet. So, there's been some misinformation in that regard.
And I'm from the insurance industry, so I know that there's issues with trees next to homes. Have you guys looked at insurance, potential insurance issues?
That's well beyond my scope.
I figured, okay.
Branch fall on root, you mean, on roof?
Yes, trees close to homes.
Any other questions for the arborist?
Yeah, sorry, one more question. I mean, as you know, there was another arborist involved. Have you guys had any consultation together?
Not on this project.
Not on this project, okay, got it. Because it sounded like they were aware of your work, but you weren't necessarily aware of their work.
No, I was very aware of their work after the fact. I wrote a rebuttal to the letter.
Okay, got you, okay.
You should have a copy of that rebuttal.
Oh, okay. I don't know if I saw that.
I had one last, I think, one last question. I noted in here that tree number two is to be, proposed to be removed.
Yes, sir.
And maybe it's just that the numbers are all too small for me to read, but where is tree number two?
It's in the middle of the lot, toward the south edge of the home proper, right at the edge of where the walkway passes through.
In the middle of?
Yeah, it's, well, it's not here because it's gone, but, so, it's right in, yeah, I can show you. It's like a small oak tree that's not quite developed very well. Looks like it's not doing too
I thought it was damaged and distressed already.
Yeah, I think it is.
Just curious where it was, because I couldn't make it out from the site.
Kind of like right in the middle where the house is
Oh, in the middle of where the house is, okay. Got it, got it.
South edge of the house.
Yeah, yeah. Another question, I apologize. On the alternative plans where they're moving the ADU away from the canopy, you don't see any impacts to the tree if that's done, correct?
I wouldn't say I don't see any impacts to the tree. It changes the tree protection scenario to blocking any potential soil movement down slope. Occasionally, in excavating slopes, rocks can be loosened and they can tumble downhill. We don't want to allow any rocks or debris going down into the root zone of the tree. So, that's an area to protect. We use straw bales on driven rebar for that purpose. It's very effective.
Okay. As you mentioned, you can hurt the root hairs
Right.
by just walking, so
Yes, that is true.
Falling rocks would do the same, I guess.
Well, and falling rocks can get momentum as they go downhill, so.
But it wouldn't require any potential pruning beyond general maintenance?
Probably not.
Probably not, okay. That's based on the fire department?
Actually, I should rephrase that. So, back in 2008, I was involved with County Fire on their fuel modification plan. We came up with a lot of language, and one of the things I was able to get across to County Fire, thankfully, with support of some excellent staff on the County Fire team, was we wanted to update the old policy of knock everything down to the ground, rake it out, take all the trees and bring them six feet off the ground. And I pointed out that depending on these trees, if they're natural trees, they could be leaning, they may be leaning to the north, for instance. If you take the limb six feet up, along comes autumn, that trunk will sunburn and then get a big canker and begin to decay. And so, their goals of trying to suppress fire, if you end up giving the tree a condition where it rots, falls over, turns dry,
Sure.
you've created a situation that catches embers and creates fire. And they said, so, A leads to B leads to C leads, oh, I said, yes.
Hadn't thought of that, they said.
If we want to look at the policy, then it makes sense to look at the individual tree, and rather than just limb everything up six feet arbitrarily, find out what works for that tree. If you're already knocking the grass down, then there's no chance of that grass fire turning into a canopy fire. It may suffice to do some minor pruning and give yourself three feet clearance, because you will not have three-foot flame lengths in consultation with County Fire. So, as it applies to this site, once it's developed, there are branches on tree three that are low sweeping branches, they're down near soil level. It would be reasonable, as those are located on the north side of the tree, to bring those up to six feet.
Okay. So, yeah, either plan will require some pruning, basically.
Right, and to comply with the County Fire standard 515, we wouldn't want any of the tree branches and landscaping to conflict, so it would inform the landscape design so there weren't, there wouldn't be a large shrub connected to the canopy of the tree.
Right, okay.
Because that's called a continuous fuel, that shrub fires can turn into a canopy fire. So, we want to design carefully around that depending on where the branches are, once it's a developed property.
Right.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your expertise.
I just wanted to make sure
We'll continue with the applicant's presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, the only other thing I had to say is, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Trent had the rebuttal. We had an opportunity to read the independent arborist report that the neighbor hired for submittal tonight, and our arborist wrote a rebuttal to that. I just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to review that.
It's in the packet. Yeah, I looked, I couldn't find it. Where? Thank you, I'll see if he's got it.
Okay.
Said C was the arborist's report, D is the rebuttal, maybe?
In the other arborist's report, it is talking about a removal of 30% of the canopy to meet the fire code requirements in the original plan. Okay? 30% sounds like a lot of the canopy to me, and that, maybe the arborist needs to come back.
I think the arborist, that's more a question for his expertise.
Okay. Do you agree that 30% might be at risk here because of the fire code, and what effect that would have on the tree?
Well, definitely not, in that matter.
Definitely not what?
Oh, the, the arborist letter you're referring to?
That's the other arborist.
Shh. I'll wait.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Just trying to get our paperwork straight.
So, do you have a copy of the rebuttal?
We're trying to find it. That's what we're looking for, but I can't, I don't know if it's in our packet or not. I don't think it is.
Well, to summarize, in my rebuttal, I said, this looks serious, I better dig into it. And I followed the citations in that letter
Yeah.
down to current standards from the fire department. And portions of that letter would lead one to believe that it's based on county ordinance, county policy, county standards. In fact, it's not. The citations are factually correct, but based on older outdated information.
Okay.
And so, using current information, the pruning to that tree only requires a clearance of 10 feet, not the specified 15 feet. The pruning into heavy limbs, it was much overstated, and so, it created the idea that, oh, this is gonna be deadly for the tree. It's not.
Thank you.
The amount of pruning required is much smaller.
Did anybody find the rebuttal?
No, I don't think it's in
I haven't found it.
Okay.
Can staff enlighten us on that?
I can say that there was a rebuttal that was provided by the applicant that was prepared by Mike Anaba, the arborist, and he just described his rebuttal, not exactly word-for-word, but pretty close.
Okay.
Okay.
And it provided all of the current standards as reference material, so that it's all in one package.
Right. So, in your rebuttal, you disagree with the fact that it would be a removal of at least 30% of the canopy to meet fire code?
Yes.
Okay. And you're saying that it, do you have an idea of what the percentage would be, or no?
I'd say it's probably closer to 15%.
15%?
10 to 15%. Given that trees use sunlight, they're driven by sunlight. They typically grow in a slight lean toward the southwest for that reason. The north side of the canopy, outside of today, doesn't normally get a lot of sunshine. Today is the longest day of the year, so that's why I'm saying that. Longest day of the year, the sun is as far north as it's gonna get. From Friday onward, we're gonna watch the sun go down until it's streaking that low horizon, December 22nd, and then we'll start coming back up. So, the north, especially the northeast side of the tree, is normally shaded. So the north, especially the northeast side of the tree, is normally shaded. That, that part of the canopy is not as photosynthetically important for the tree. It's important for other reasons, but that's not where the tree gets most of its energy. That's why we see the northeast portion of a tree normally thinner. The tree doesn't invest the resources, because it's not photosynthetically as advantageous. Okay?
One more. The neighbors have responsibility for half of the tree. Would you be working on the whole tree, or just working on mitigating the half of the tree?
I would be delighted to work in association with neighbors on the whole tree, but I don't know if that is a possibility. It is, it is a great outcome when that's possible.
Are the neighbors here?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, sorry, one more thing. So in your rebuttal, because we don't have it.
I have it if you'd like to.
Oh, that's okay, that's all right, I'm just, hopefully he'll, he'll be able to answer. So in your, in your rebuttal, you're basically saying that there wouldn't be a need for severe pruning that would cause the large wounds and introduce decay and, and eventually kill the tree?
Yes, I take particular exception to that idea, because underneath that tree, that very tree, there is another valley oak that is actively decaying. It's been dying due to suppression and, and neglect. So to say that the pruning is going to cause decay, when there's an actively sick tree under the canopy, it sounds like there's a little bit of hypocrisy.
That sick tree is going to be removed?
I don't know, it's been left there, it actually conflicts with the current county fire standard 515.
And whose property is it on?
The neighbor property.
The K tree?
It's been removed already?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, again, to wrap it up, you have a, you feel, in your professional opinion, that this build will not severely impact the health of the tree?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, there are steps that we'll take to mitigate the encroachment. And being that I like to document everything, I document that, that work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, having heard from the applicants, we'll go to the rest of the public, and we'll open the public comment portion of this item. And I'm, I just have a stack of cards, I'll call people in the order that I see them here. First, Lisa Oberst. Oh, oh, okay, very good, all right. Jan Skow.
It's actually quite perfect, since I'm the arborist on the other side of the property line. My name is Jan Skow. My company is Jan C. Skow Consulting Arborist LLC. I live at 401 North Ventura Street in Ojai. I'm a registered consulting arborist, I'm a board certified master arborist, and I promise you that I will be truthful. So I hope that's helpful.
We expect that of everyone who stands there.
Yes, so would I. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Bresslers. So first of all, my report was done based on an understanding of a fifteen foot clearance requirement that may or may not be implemented. I understand now that that's not the case, that ten feet is relevant. Ten feet of clearance from that ADU is a significant and damaging amount of clearance. I've been on the property, I don't know if Mr. Lenaba was on the property when the story poles were up. The ADU is inside the canopy of the tree. It's within a few feet of limbs that are this big in diameter. Those are not small limbs, they are within ten feet of the building, of the story poles. So, I don't believe that I intentionally misrepresented anything, and I still believe that the ten foot fire clearance requirement is excessive, and it's going to necessitate the removal of twenty-five to thirty percent of the canopy. I'd be happy to go out there on the ground and look at that with anybody that's interested. That's a guess, it may not be completely accurate, but it's, it's quite a lot, and it's some very large limbs. The additional impacts from the soil excavation, in and of themselves, would not be significant. However, added to the significant amount of pruning that's required, that would add another stressor to the trees. These combined impacts are severe. Both the amount of canopy loss and the size of the pruning cuts needed to create that clearance would be considered excessive impacts and very poor arboricultural practice. I've been doing this for forty years. I've worked my, my specialty is oak trees, it has been from the beginning. The simple fact is that the, the new location that's been proposed for the ADU pretty much solves this particular problem. I'm not the neighbor, I know the neighbor has other problems, but that's, that should take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, well, yeah, just a quick, quick question. So you mentioned your initial observation was based on fifteen feet, and you're thinking it's probably, it should be ten feet?
It's my understanding that it is ten feet.
It's ten feet, okay, okay.
He said that's being violated.
Right, right, and then, so in your, in your professional opinion, it's, it's not going to be quite thirty percent, it's going to be less?
It's probably less, and I, again, I don't know the exact percentage.
Right.
What I do know is those are very large limbs that are going to have to be cut to get ten feet of clearance.
So, in, in your professional opinion, do you feel that this, the original concept could impact the health of the tree?
Oh, absolutely. It might not be instantaneous, but over years, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Skow?
Don't go anywhere.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, we have pictures, because as a part of the report, we took pictures of the tree. So may I show you?
An awful lot of, we had an awful lot of pictures in this.
It's, it's a picture of the tree with the story poles, he was saying that the limbs were this big.
Attachment D, page fourteen? Yeah, it's right here, so this, that's the one, those story poles.
Looks to me like they're set back from the tree.
Oh, it's under the canopy.
Yeah.
This one is under the canopy, this one.
The roof line will be under the canopy.
Oh, that's a red line, it's not a story pole, sorry.
That's what they're saying, they would have to adjust the tree canopy to, if the fifteen foot.
Get ten feet away from there.
Well, that's fifteen, yeah, ten is the.
Are we, just to make sure we're asking questions versus deliberation, thank you.
We're still asking questions.
We're trying to understand what, what the packet holds.
The, the photo that the applicant's representative is showing is not in your packet. The photos in your packet are from, have been provided by the neighbor to the south. The photos in attachment, attachment, attachment D, yep.
Okay.
May I share this photo?
Sure, bring it up, sure. We'll preview. So the top of this pole is where the top of the roof would be?
And it needs to be ten feet clear.
Potentially, yeah, in, in, going that way, toward the tree, yes. That's what the fire code, fire department could do.
No, I haven't seen it yet.
So this is the top of the ADU right here?
Yeah. It's in the tree.
It looks like it's in the tree.
Yeah, so there would be some pruning that have, that would be done to provide clearance.
How many feet is it from the trunk?
And then you have to get ten feet away from that. I mean, it's not just a matter of clearing the roof. You have to be ten feet away.
Ten feet from the roof.
Please make sure you're using your mic, and it's Q and A versus deliberation at this point.
Especially as we're, we're still in the middle of public comment, so.
Yeah, we should probably keep, keep it public.
Yeah, third, third point here, just, just as a.
So how many feet is the ADU from the trunk, even though it's in the tree here?
I believe we're in the twenty-something feet away from the trunk. The ADU is about twenty-five feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, and the roots, you could assume that the roots are under those branches?
No, not at all, that's not how trees work.
Tell me how they do work.
Yes, ma'am. Roots are opportunistic. I've seen trees that have all of their roots on one side of the tree. I've literally excavated the trunk and found a nice round rump, three feet down, no roots on one side of the tree, all the roots on the other side. And, very unusual, but.
Particularly on the downhill side, as you were saying before.
In that case, it was a flat property, here in town. And so, we don't know exactly what we're going to find underground until we start looking, but the trend is for roots to grow downhill. And it, the trend for the canopy is also toward the southwest. And given that this tree is located along the property line, if the canopy was symmetrical on that property line, which it's not, it would have fifty percent of the canopy on one side, fifty percent on the other. Given that it's leaning to the southwest, probably sixty or sixty-five percent of the canopy is off property. And that leaves only thirty-five, on the neighbor's property. So if we were to cut everything back to the property line, we would still be leaving sixty, sixty-five percent of the canopy. Which begs the question, if we're twenty-five feet away from the tree, how, how are we saying that ten foot clearance of pruning would remove thirty-five percent of that canopy? That doesn't mathematically work. So beyond that, the fire department's policy is about canopy foliage, not large limbs. Large limbs don't easily ignite, but the small, dry canopy can. And so when they have a canopy clearance, it's generally about keeping leafy canopies away from the eaves of a, of a roof, where it might, might throw some embers into the attic or catch underneath the eaves. If we were to look at many homes in Ojai, we would find canopies touching roofs, and they're not in violation. So, we have a standard, and then we have enforcement, we have common practice. Common practice is three foot clearance is fine, five foot is good, ten foot is exceptional, often limited to chimneys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of the applicant? What did you say was the problem or downside of moving the ADU to the alternate plan?
To the plan, the second plan we proposed?
Yes, because that's the one that the other arbitrists said that would eliminate that problematic tree. So what is the, what's the downside from the design or anything?
Because it pushes it up towards the top of the house, so it doesn't make it, from a transition standpoint, it doesn't make it sort of a part of the house, it pushes it back up, sort of that it's in line with the house. And so, the, it's, it's called an ADU, but they're using it, it's going to be like a pool house, and they have a big yard in the center, so it's really the circulation, you know, of where they're going to entertain, and how they're going to use the house, and how they can monitor and watch their children when they're in that house, potentially using it as well.
When they're visiting in the summer?
Yes.
So they want it closer to the pool, almost?
Yes, I mean, essentially, it's an office up above and, and a pool house, so a place to use the restroom and shower off and.
Is there any consideration of moving the, the outdoor patio over to, and putting the ADU in the middle, right next to the pool? If it is going to be a pool house?
Well, like I said, they come from the east coast, and so they're used to these giant yards, and so they really wanted to preserve, they didn't want pool structure closed in space. They were really looking for a wide open space to.
Clients to the west.
Yeah, so they really wanted the, the yard and the view.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Now, with the, the second proposal, because it's going to sit higher up on the hill, wouldn't that have better views?
It's only going to sit four, four feet, five inches higher than the, the initial proposal. And because it's tucked behind the garage, it limits the views somewhat. Whereas when it's in the, the initial proposed location, it really gets that whole view of, of the hill.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Next, Andy Bressler.
Excuse me, I'm not sure where to start, because we've got, before we start that clock, we've got a new plan that I haven't even really had an opportunity to look at, and it does mitigate the tree issue, which is our big concern. So I would like to address the tree issue, as if it's going where it was originally proposed. And then I would like to.
We need to understand your opinion of, of both.
Good, I would, that'd be great. So, again, I'm Andy Bressler, I live at 340 Longhorn Lane, right next door to the applicant. My only concern tonight pertains to the proposed ADU's impacts on the shared fifty-eight foot tall oak tree. It has about a seventy foot canopy. The oak provides our only natural screening from the proposed twenty-one and a half foot tall ADU, which is right on our fence line. We're very concerned the tree will be damaged or possibly lost as a result of this work. And obviously, there's no way to replace it with anything that could provide comparable natural screening to anything the size of this oak tree from this ADU. It is our screening for the ADU. Our concerns are based on the following facts. The current proposed location of the ADU sits seven feet into the existing drip line of our oak tree. Because we are classified as a hazardous fire area, the county fire department regulations require the ten foot minimum clearance between the new structure and tree branches. So as currently proposed, the tree would have to be pruned back seventeen feet, which is almost half of the thirty-five foot radius, measured radius, that I measured, of the existing tree canopy adjacent to the ADU. This pruning involves lopping off several large diameter branches. Additionally, there's a retaining wall that surrounds the ADU. It is about six feet offset from the ADU and, around the ADU. So excavation work is going to be required that extends fifteen to sixteen feet into the canopy of the tree, excavating into the root zone. Because of these concerns, we hired our arborist, and you heard him earlier tonight, to evaluate the impacts of the tree. Based on the Ventura County ten foot clearance requirement, Mr. Skow still believes, and I quote from his comments and, a, a letter to me, that the proposed placement of the ADU imparts harm that is significant, unnecessary, and unreasonable to the shared valley oak tree on the property line. Even the project arborist, Mr. Lenaba states in his report that, and I quote, "Shared tree management and shared risk accompany the proposed work." I discussed both moving the ADU, as well as moving the entire project to the north, away from the oak tree with the owner. The owner would not entertain moving the ADU at that time, and felt moving the whole project to the north would encroach into the tree line to the north of the proposed main house. Currently, the north end of the house, if you look at the drawings, is fifteen feet from the tree line on the north side of the property. The northern tree line of the owner's concern is formed by two very large fallen oak trees, whose trunks are laying on the ground but still producing foliage. I propose either the relocation of the ADU or moving the project to the north, either in an acceptable alternative that would prevent any risk or harm to the perfectly healthy shared valley oak tree. So in summary, it's not really complicated to change the existing plans, either moving the ADU, which, there's a proposal tonight, which I would like to review further, or moving the whole project a few feet to the north, because the oak trees to the north aren't really that big a concern, and it keeps everything together of the ADU relative to the main house. You know, they could still keep that same symmetry, just move it fifteen feet to the north. And that solves the whole problem and doesn't make any other new changes that we have to review on the plans. It would avoid all potential risk or harm to our perfectly healthy oak tree. It addresses the county requirements for the hazardous fire area, and it avoids. and avoids the aesthetic damage to the tree that would result from lopping off seventeen feet of one side of our tree. So I thank you for that time and consideration of our concerns. I think they're real concerns. I think Arbor shares those concerns. And I think it's, the, the impact of the tree is being understated from the work that's going to be required. And if you go walk the property, I think you'll see what needs to be done to meet these requirements. I, I would like to address moving the ADU to the east is, in the alternate plan. I assume if, if that is the direction that is, things are going, we'll have an opportunity to comment on that one. And I would assume also that the Persimmon Hill Homeowners Association has to approve the plans for city review. And so it would have to go back to the Persimmon Hill Homeowners Association for approval of those changes and create a new comment period before that change could be approved. And I'm sorry I went over my three minutes.
Sir?
Yes?
Could you tell me if you have been satisfied on the privacy issue?
I have been satisfied on the privacy issue, but this tree is a privacy issue.
I, I understand that.
Because if the tree goes, we've got no privacy.
Okay, but I was referring to the raising of the windows and the possibility of frosted windows on that side or whatever. Have you worked out with the applicant how that would affect you?
We think that was an improvement in the right direction for the privacy issue. But particularly with this new plan, the privacy issue becomes a whole new concern. Because moving that project up slope is right outside our bathroom window, basically. And now you've got, you've brought it up higher. So the house, which is a low slung house, it's really nicely designed into the hillside. I, I like it.
Yes.
The ADU however, is about a twenty-five foot square, give or take, footprint that's twenty-one and a half feet tall or more. And so you bring that up next to the house, and now you've got a little mini tower right next to the house, that to me is out of scale with the project. That, and it's right next to our house, and I think the homeowners ourselves would have some serious concerns about that. Because it, it certainly would be out of scale with the project, and it certainly would have been intrusion from a privacy standpoint. Yes.
Have you seen the design?
Pardon me?
Have you seen the alternate design?
Yes, I have, and that's what I'm saying. Our, if you look at that drawing, they've moved that building considerably up slope. And what that does, it, it brings it up into more view of the side of our house, basically. So it's our master bedroom and our master bath. Excuse me, our main bathroom and main house.
Summarize, the applicant would rather not use the alternate plan, and you would rather not use the alternate plan?
Correct, but I would like to see the ADU moved to the north away from the tree. I still think it's important to get away from the tree, because that's, that's the bottom line. If the tree is damaged, we lose all, all natural screening from this project. And like I say, I'm happy with the house. I think it's a nice project. But I don't understand the need for a tower when you've got two and a half acres and you're using, what, sixteen, seventeen percent of the territory? You've got plenty of room there, just to slide the whole thing over a little bit and solve everybody's problem. So if that were to happen, I'd be perfectly happy.
We'd call that alternative B.
Yes, I would. And to me, it makes a lot of sense, and the, the concern about the northern tree line, I invite anybody to go out and look, and it's, there's two hu- huge oak trees that are laying on the ground. But to drive by and just glance, you see a tree line there and a lot of foliage, and they're two down trees. And I, I, I see our, our healthy fifty-eight foot tall oak tree being a lot more valuable than those two trees laying on the ground. And they already have fifteen foot of clearance now from those, so moving fifteen foot toward them is ten-foot of clearance additionally required to the, those oak trees. To me, that would be an ideal solution to everybody.
How far to the north are you proposing that it be moved?
Just all you needed. If you go fifteen feet, you're clear.
Probably ten feet. You'd probably do ten feet.
Probably ten feet would do it.
This, this alternative B is not something that we have in our packet.
That's true.
And it's not something that we are in a position to make a decision on tonight.
It's, it's a, it's a option that's being identified as something that may or may not meet the requirements for fire department. From a, from a city ordinance standpoint, either one of these options, obviously the one that's in the packet and that was part of the, the notice hearing, that one meets all of the standards as it relates to.
This alternative A meets the standards.
It would as well, but it's not something that has been circulated properly. I mean, we've provided that information to this body, to to anybody that's wanting to review it. I mean, it's something that came to us pretty late in the game. So it's not a, something we were able to put in the packet as a part of this process.
So to consider either of these alternatives, we'd have to.
The, the first one's not an alternative, that's the proposal.
Yes.
The second one we're looking at here, which is the alternative site plan, is an alternative. That is alternative A, if you want to call it that.
Just a third alternative.
The applicant has not requested an alternative B that, or alternative two. It's something that a member of the public is, is providing as an.
Suggesting.
Suggesting, right. So it's not an al, it's not a proposed.
In terms of what we're looking at here on the screen and what everybody's seeing at home in TV land, this is the alternative that suffices, quote unquote, may suffice.
This is the applicant's alternative.
Correct. Not something that was in the packet.
Yes, to protect the tree.
This is the, this is the site plan that is in your packet and was circulated and meets our standards.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, oh, um, yeah, next, Sigrid Bressler.
Hello.
Hello.
Sigrid, and live next door to the proposed project, the Kno's Building. I just want to say that my concern, and it's really been addressed all night, is obviously the tree. I don't see, excuse me, in Michael Anaba's report, he did state that we share maintenance and also a risk. It's a shared risk. I don't want to take that risk. This tree can live to be six hundred years old. I think that's what I read on the internet. It's a beautiful oak tree. I don't understand why, when you have two point five acres, why you need to build that building right underneath the tree. Move it, as Andy suggested, maybe go to the north, but don't take a risk on that tree. And if we do lose the tree, and I think you have a Photoshop picture, if we lose the tree, that's it for our privacy. Our backyard is basically our entertainment area. And also, if that tree were lost, if I'm in my bed, I could wave to you, okay? Also the same thing in the main bathroom. Yes, I can put my blinds down, okay, but that's not what it's all about. It's just, I would be heartbroken if we lost the tree. And I know it could happen in five years. It could happen in seven years. I might not be around, okay? But six hundred years, I don't want to like be the one responsible for taking that chance, that risk, that Michael Anaba even mentioned in his report. That's it. I just please take it into consideration, everything that we're saying.
If, if this project should go forward as the, as originally proposed, are you willing to work, have the, the arborists work together on both sides of the tree?
Well, I guess I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay, well, we seem to have the tree split down the middle.
Yes, we do.
Somebody's taking care of one side, and somebody else is taking care of the other side. And then, and then we're talking about irrigating and pruning and protecting and all of that kind of thing. Are you willing to work or allow their arborist to work on your side and take care of your side of the tree?
I'm not sure what work would be required on our side. We've had the tree pruned for health reasons, not that long ago.
On your side?
So, you know, the, the activity is occurring as a result of construction is our concern, and that's all happening on their side. So that's our big concern, is taking off seventeen foot of the canopy off the north side of the tree, which is on their side, and excavating around the root structure, which is, what I say, sixteen feet, eighteen feet into the drip line of the tree, excavating for the retaining wall and the foundation of the new structure. Those are all the impacts. I don't know that we're doing anything, I mean, we certainly would be happy to talk to them.
Right.
But our concern is that excavation work and the pruning activity that's going to impact the tree. And, you know, we see a concern, our arborist sees a concern. I see a simple solution that would make everybody happy and end this whole thing. And that would be just, you know, to move things a little bit to the north, and we're only talking, you know, ten, fifteen feet, and that solves the problem. And it seems like a simple thing.
I mean, I would love, I don't want to get into this with neighbors.
Yeah, we wouldn't be good neighbors, but we just, you know, we just don't understand why they want to tear into the tree that so hard when they've got all this room to work with.
Could we hear from the applicants about the, the reasonableness of moving the whole structure north? What that proposal would, how that would impact. I, with all the slope going on, I get a little confused about.
I just want to jump in here, sorry Commissioner Murphy. Do we want to finish public comment? Are there any additional public comment before we, because we can still hear from the applicant and, okay, and do stuff after we've closed public comment.
All right.
Okay.
Let's do that.
That may be more appropriate time.
So we're closed?
We may talk again.
Just to clarify, that after a public comment is closed, the commission can still hear from the applicant as well as.
During deliberations.
During deliberation process, yeah.
Terrific, okay. The last speaker card that I have is Mackenzie Combs.
Hi, everybody. I also live, my name's Mackenzie Combs. I also live on Longhorn Lane. I'm just to the south of these guys. I live at three hundred Longhorn Lane. I also work in architecture. I'm a project manager, just like Lisa. I've reviewed the plans. I have a couple of thoughts. I've met with Ron. I was at the meeting with Andy Bressler and Sigrid, and Ron onsite to discuss some of these.
Ron is?
I believe he owns three eighty Longhorn LLC.
Oh, oh, Ron King, the parcel owner. Okay.
So I'm just going to speak to the plans, and I believe that a lot of them have good information in them, but there is some information in there that's not accurate or is inconsistent. A couple of those things I'd like you to look at if you have a moment. The north elevation and the south elevation of this guest house is how it's represented on the plans, is actually being cut off by that twenty-five foot height limit. I know we're grading into the hill, and the overall height of the structure is twenty-one foot five, but I believe your code reads the natural slope. And so if you measure up from there on the plans that you have, and you can actually see it really well in one of the sections, section J on the plans, you can see that the roof line of the second floor has a pretty significant portion of it, exceeding that twenty-five foot height limit. On top of that, if you review the sections and the elevations, you'll see some drafting irregularities to the tune of two and a half feet of the finished floor height of both that guest house first floor and the guest house second floor. Obviously, it's, what we're talking about is the height of the structure, so I think it's relevant and it's important that we review information that is accurate to what will be built onsite. So I think it's important that we just confirm, verify, and move forward with drawings that are put together accurately. I know that the privacy concerns have been brought up. I've reviewed the topo. I think it's really important that you guys look at this site from more than just the cross slope elevations and the section cuts that you have. It's been presented as fifteen percent as a s- average slope. The area that they're talking about here, in terms of this guest house, is significantly steeper than any other part of the entire lot. It happens to about their property, their bathroom, their shower, and their living room. Obviously, I live on the block, and all of us could be in this situation with these ADUs moving forward. I think this sets a dangerous precedent. Unfortunately, our homeowners association does not have any teeth to modify the design or the intent of these projects. And so although it is and has been approved through the HOA, unfortunately, it's been kind of a, a poor sub, uh, review process. Last thing, it's, it's presented in the staff notes as an ADU. I don't see that anywhere in the plan submittal. It's called out as a guest house just about everywhere else. It's shown as a partial kitchen, which in my line of work is consistent with the design guidelines of a guest house. If it is truly proposed as a guest house, you guys have a part of your municipal code that reads that a design review determination can't be made, or a design review approval can't be made unless privacy concerns are addressed by the applicant in regards of neighbors' privacy. And so I think it's important to distinguish between it being an ADU, a poolhouse, an office, or a guest house, because there are long-term effects and implications of all of that. I have that section printed if you guys would like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd cite, if you'd cite the section, well, first of all, first of all, you, you looked at the plans. Is this a guest house or an ADU?
It's an ADU.
Okay. It has sufficient cooking and, and washing and sleeping and sanitation facilities to be an ADU?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I understand he's the authority. If you look at your cover sheet.
The authority is the code. It's, it's the code specifically. Guest house typically do not have, and actually I think cannot have.
Don't have cooking.
Cooking facilities, which this has.
Understood. If you look at the floor plans, the site calculations for the coverage, the cover sheet, the site plan, it's all called out as a guest house and not as an ADU.
The plan's inaccurately, call it a guest house, and it's been called out to the applicant by staff several times. Anyway, it, it is a, an ADU, and a, as the director just said, guests' houses are not, guest houses are not permitted to have kitchens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
So an ADU doesn't have to be rented. It could be used as a guest house, even though it qualifies as an ADU. Otherwise, guests could just come.
I think, I think Lucas has something to say.
Guest houses are treated much differently than ADUs.
But I mean, an ADU doesn't have to be rented. It could just be sitting.
Well, that's true. It does not have to be rented.
You could have guests come and stay there in your ADU.
Correct.
Just can't rent it.
However, the renting of such ADU must be for a minimum of thirty days.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Just want to clarify that.
Okay, is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sherry, is there anyone out there in television land with a hand raised?
No, there's not.
Okay. Then we're going to close the public comment portion of this item and go back to deliberations as a commission.
Can I ask a question of the applicant since we've?
That's appropriate during deliberations.
There has been a suggestion that this, the current location of the ADU could, at least the neighbors requesting it could be moved ten feet to the north. How big a hardship would that be on the design, the landscaping, so forth of what has been planned?
Can I come up and look at that drawing? I'm, I just want to identify.
That's the alternative one. Let me find that. Yes, yes. You've got, oh, here you go.
Here.
Do you want to pull that out?
Toward, it would be toward Buck, Buckboard Lane.
Yeah.
It would, uh, encroach into your, whatever that is, your retaining wall, and then there's some grass there, it looks like.
Right, so to move the property north would move the property closer to the busy street.
I'm not talking about the property. I'm not talking about the property. Moving the ADU ten feet to the north, that's what's suggested as one alternative.
Oh, moving it in the yard, um.
Moving it in ten feet. How, how far is that ADU from that retaining wall there?
I would let, um, our general contractor comment on that.
Okay.
Where that retaining wall is.
First, first one? First one after the notes page.
This retaining wall here.
So there's a, there's a retaining, there's a retaining wall to the, uh.
North.
Which one?
Right here?
Yes, yes. And so that, that retaining wall would have to, uh, go away or be redesigned.
Yeah, but I mean, how, what's the difference between, between the ADU and the retaining wall? How much distance is that?
Oh, probably six feet.
Six feet, so, okay. So it would have to encroach about four feet into that, uh, greenery there and, um, and then maybe have another retaining wall? Is that your suggestion?
Yeah, and, and well, you still have to have the, it, 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 it encroaches ten feet because you still have to have that six-foot walkway in front of it.
I see, okay.
So the retaining wall in the building would both move ten feet?
Yeah, so if you look at it, that retaining wall is just off the corner of the house and then it would be behind the house. And I don't know, part of the hardship would be redesigning that, having, having, you know, the, the design team redesign that and, and figure out how that drainage works, how that slope works, how those, how those, uh, site walls work.
I'm not saying it can't work.
I mean, you can build anything you want. It just takes.
Another option is to get this thing down to one story, which seems to, uh, be a possible solution or
And down to one story doesn't change the footprint of.
And, 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 hang on.
Sorry.
Um, I was looking at a, a more elongated building so that you can move away from that southern, from that tree.
Well, one thing to note on the ADU height that we've all been talking about and, and in the second scenario, moving it closer to the, um, would that be east?
That's east.
East, um, the, the structure where it's graded to is kind of at the lower side of the grading point. And so from the street, and we submitted some pictures, um, it's going to seem like it's all a one-story structure because the ADU is lower than the, the house.
It, it looks great if you're standing out on Longhorn, but if you're in Bressler's, on Bressler, am I saying that name right? On the neighbors.
Bressler's, yes.
Yeah, patio, well, then not so much.
Right, and they have a two-story structure on their house and I know concerns, you know, looking out from their bedroom. You know, they don't want to see the neighbors any more than the neighbors want to look up, you know?
And see them.
So it's, it's a dual thing in terms of privacy.
Move that thing ten feet, that would almost create a barrier, site barrier to the whole backyard. Because you'd have a tree and you'd have a two-story ADU that will block any view of the pool or anything back there.
Right, I mean, we feel that, that's achieved now in, in this plan that we have.
Okay, I'm just posing it.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I have a couple.
Trying hard to get around this problem of the, the tree.
We got disputed arbiter, so that's not an issue.
I, I have a couple of questions for staff because we've, we've heard a lot of numbers thrown around tonight. Um, one in particular had to do with the height of a building. Is it above natural grade or is it above finished grade? What does the code provide? If, if it were above natural grade, then there would be no point in doing any grading at all.
Yeah, I, so I need to look at that code specifically to see if it, because that is a technical piece to the, to the code. Um, I also wanted to point to a correction that I made. I, I incorrectly stated something regarding guest house. So I just took a look at the code real quick and I had made a statement saying that guest's house cannot have a kitchen and that's not correct. That's incorrect. So I want to apologize for that. They, you can have a, um, a kitchen, so that, the restriction doesn't exist within the code. This does meet the parameters. I just looked at the code. It does meet the parameters for an ADU, which is the reason why.
What's the difference between a guest house and an ADU?
Uh, it's. Well, the, the code, I, I think guest house was an outdated definition from the, the code before ADUs, um, became very popular. The guest houses ordinance was adopted in two thousand and four. Um, but it, it seems to be there's some size requirements. So it looks like guest houses are, are capped based on, at six hundred and forty square feet for maximum square footage, where ADUs are allowed to go to eight hundred square footage, square feet.
I thought it was twelve hundred square.
Excuse me.
Minimum of tw- of eight up to twelve.
Excuse me, the, the guest house can fluctuate a little bit if the, the lot is bigger as well.
So that's a, that's one difference.
Right, I, I, I think it's a part of the code, um, that just didn't get modernized though, is the answer.
CUPs require.
Are those size standards state law or they are?
There's no, no, state stuff is ADU, guest house.
No, I'm talking about the ADU with the, between eight hundred and twelve hundred square feet. Is that something that we put in or is that required by the state? Because you know, most of our ADU standards were dictated by state law.
Right, it's required by the state.
So it's by the state, okay.
Right, and even if our code isn't up to date, it's still, what, what the state has legislated governs here. But the, the state hasn't, um, as far as I'm aware, legislated about guest houses and stuff. That, I mean, that doesn't mean it's a workaround around ADUs though, right? So I'll leave it to staff to, to determine whether this was a guest house or ADU and it sounds like they determined it was an ADU, just that, uh, the applicant kept on using the wrong terminology.
Sounds like they want to use this as a guest house, but they want to get it approved as an ADU. That's what I'm.
Right, our, our code doesn't determine, as long as you don't violate our short-term rental ordinance.
Yeah.
You know, using it as a guest house or, yeah, it's still allowed.
And, and there's really no clear definition between an ADU and a guest house in our code.
A guest house does require CUP.
Sherry.
CUP.
The, the code specifically identifies definition for a guest house and specifically identifies a definition for an ADU. And those are in specific sections of our code.
Yeah.
So in terms of whether or not it does define it, it does define it very specifically.
But this couldn't be a guest house because it's too big, in part.
In part, right. Regardless, ADU is where this is trending.
Yeah, got it.
Okay.
That's, that's fair.
Okay, we don't have, uh, any other speakers. I'm interested in.
You, you asked, excuse me Chair.
Please go ahead.
You asked, you asked two questions. Uh, one of them was regarding the ADU versus, um, guest house and the other one was regarding, uh, measurement of height.
Height above grade, is it natural grade or finished grade?
Uh, section ten dash two point eight oh three height measurement and exceptions, um, states that the maximum allowable height is, uh, to be, shall be measured, um, as the vertical distance from the existing grade of the site, um, to the allowed number above of the, uh, sorry, um, of feet above grade. So it would be, um, existing grade, not finished grade.
So does this meet that standard?
Uh, this means that the proposed ADU does not meet the code. It would need to be reduced in height.
Lower?
Yes.
By how many feet?
Um, I'm thinking four if they're moving it up forward, uh, because they'd be grading down four feet. But, but that's something that, um, the architect would have to figure out.
Whether that same grade requirement would affect the alternative.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I was actually talking about because I believe.
Just the alternative one?
Well, I think in the alternative, they would be grading, um, four feet or they'd be excavating four feet. But it's really for the architect and or contractor to answer that, um, accurately.
But the current version, what the ones submitted to it.
The primary proposal.
Does that mean?
How much grading, how much excavation is there?
I don't have, um, the ability to measure this, um, so I could have the, um, the applicant answer that question.
Okay.
Can the applicant answer the question? As to, um, what is the grading for the ADU? Because the height is to be measured from existing grade, not finished grade. And so there will be excavation required or proposed rather for the ADU. Can you answer as to how much, um, excavation is being done? How many feet?
I couldn't answer that right now. I have to look at the question of the plan.
So what we have is a potential violation of the municipal code in the current design.
I agree, because we don't have, we don't have the information to show how much it had to be reduced by to meet the standard.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, at sheet A dash three point one. That's something provided by the applicant. And I'm looking at east elevation and it, I can't, I can't make sense of dotted lines and dashed lines and such, but the east elevation looks like the existing grade is sloping toward the north. And that doesn't make any sense to me. I think it slopes toward the south.
It slopes up towards the south.
Up.
It's up toward the south?
Yeah, so.
Yeah. This, this guest house or ADU.
This is west, east. This, this is, the grade goes down like this.
That looks like a, like four feet or something there.
South to west.
This right here.
Yeah, this says east elevation.
East elevation.
That doesn't look right.
That's looking at it from the street. So that says the neighbor's property is higher than the ADU already.
Yes.
That is, that is true, yeah. I've, I've seen this, I saw the site, that is true.
But this, the elevation line is the, this line right through the middle of the unit going on down.
Where it says existing grade at building line.
So that's, that dotted line there is the existing grade?
Okay.
So that's quite a, quite a, um.
That looks like about.
Dugout, about four feet.
About four feet at the south edge as well.
About four feet.
Um, I think we need to get a couple of these things sorted out before we make a decision on either of the alternatives.
Yeah, how high is this going to be?
So we need to continue the item to a date certain?
I don't know how, how else to do this.
I would move that we continue it to clarify the, the code problem, but also to work with the neighbors and the various arbiters to see there's any, uh.
Other options?
Any solution to this tree threat.
Yep.
And heights that both parties would be satisfied with. Doesn't mean that, that they can't come back and not be satisfied, but I would, I would request that we attempt that.
We've, we as moderators have met and staff, I mean, have met with, uh, both sides on several occasions. We're certainly welcome to, to those conversations after this meeting to see where, to see where it leads. The height situation is concerning to me because I, looking at this, I thought we were meeting code, so I do apologize. I think we do need to address that as well.
It's, it's a tiny dashed line.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
On, on a hard to read drawing on this size, so.
Regardless, regardless, it is an error on staff's standpoint. We need to address it.
I, I would also like to retract the response, um, when Chair asked me if the code, if the plans meet the code regarding height and I instantly said that no, they don't. And looking at them now, I, I, I would like to say that I'm unsure, even if the code section that I read is what we're to go by. Because looking at, um, sheet A dash, uh, three point one, um, you can see the actual, um, earth, uh, grade, the existing grade, and then you can see the proposed.
Finished grade.
Finished grade. And if you were to take the rest of the structure and put it on the top, I mean, it's, the, the.
About four feet different there at the south.
At least four feet there.
South edge of the ADU.
Right, but it's, uh, and it's at, you know, twenty-one and a half feet from, anyway, I would just like to retract that it does not meet code and say that I'm unsure and that it would take looking into a little bit further.
That's what we're proposing.
How much time do you think, if we continue this, how much time do you think that, uh, these clarifications or redrawings will take?
Well, part of that, um, depends on what would be happening with the applicant and if they were, um, if they were wanting to revise the plans, um, and then their scheduling, i- i- if, if these revisions would even take place.
I don't think we need to have a date certain.
I would recommend date certain.
Oh, really? What, how many days, ninety?
No, 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 that seems too far out. Uh, I would say the second meeting in July.
Second meeting in July.
The nineteenth of July?
Yes.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk to the applicant and the general contractor. Is, is this four weeks from now? Is that time enough to resolve this discrepancy?
I mean, I, I think it could be done in less time than that. If there's another meeting in two weeks, I would aim for that.
Right.
We don't have one in two weeks.
We, we don't.
At the moment, we have not scheduled one for the day after the holiday.
Okay, so it would be July.
So it would be four weeks from today.
Four weeks from today. You can do it in that time.
I think it's reasonable to give them a month for us to talk back and forth and work through. What I'm seeing is, is a pretty, it's several sites, several of these plans need to be addressed. It's not just one and then it's fixed. I think that's something we need to address offline here. The tree situation has been something that's been ongoing. I'm not sure if we can find resolution on that, but it's certainly something we can back, bring back to the table for discussion at this point. I think you're seeing both sides, um, and certainly there's being, um, lines being drawn in the sand on it, so.
I, I would like to see the tree be given priority as plans, uh, have to change in some way, shape or form. Um, protecting that tree would be very high on my list of how to go about moving, whether it's alternate plan B or C, maybe a different shape of building. Anyway, that's what I would like you to keep in mind.
I'd like to see.
Maybe the, the, a, a fair way to say this is we have, we have uncovered a situation where a piece of the code is not met. And, and we would like to have the applicants figure out by themselves, with the neighbors, with staff, whatever, a way to comply with the code with an alternate design. And what that turns out to be is up to you to come back and say, is this design okay?
Okay.
Um, as far as the HOA, it sounds like that's not going to be a hurdle, whatever they do. So.
And incorporate all those comments into my motion.
And I'd like to, I would like to see.
I have one more comment.
I have one more comment.
Wow, step back. Uh, just on behalf of the Kano's, Ron and Katie, who came up to a meeting to speak to the Bressers and talk to them and we have made concessions in the window height. Um, at one of the meetings, the conversation got so heated by the Bressers that Katie Kano had to take, physically take her kids away. So I'm just a little bit concerned going away from this and trying to come to an agreement that makes sense for everybody is, is really not possible. And, and he, and he also came up to the Bressers and asked for a meeting and brought a bottle of wine and asked if they could chat. That meeting also ended very badly. So I feel like on behalf of the owners, I don't know what the solution is to try to come to a conclusion that makes everyone happy. Certainly, we want to comply with code and do whatever we need to do and, and with the fire department, we're more than willing to do that. Um, but I'm, I'm just, I want it to, that this time between this meeting and next meeting to be productive and leaving us with the thought that we will get, put our heads together and come up with a solution is shown not to be productive.
My recommendation is that you, you as the applicant team, whatever you call it, um, talk to staff because we're now talking about code compliance.
Sure.
And you come back with a proposal and you talk to whoever you need to talk to.
Okay.
To come back with a proposal. As I'm looking at this, uh, A three dash three point one and I look at the east elevation, I see that the existing natural grade crosses the, the currently proposed finished grade at about the north edge of the current building, not counting the covered porch. So if you, if you moved. So if you, if you moved the building that far, then the proposed finish grade and the existing grade would be the same. And in fact, if, if it's a twenty-five foot height limit on ADUs, I believe that's the standard right now, you wouldn't have to move that far. To get to a point where your twenty-one and a half foot tall building, as currently designed, I'd like not to mess with that, because it's just extra cost. The close, the farther north you move that building, the more slack you have to get that twenty-one and a half foot tall building within a twenty-five foot height above existing grade. So.
Based on the numbers you had there for the walkway, and then where the slope kinda starts straightening out.
Right, you just move.
That looks like almost exactly ten feet. This happens to be.
Here's your finish grade.
So if you wanna keep it as high as it is, maybe ten feet might be as well. Anyway, it's up for you to bring it back.
Yeah, the porch could go.
The porch, you'll do fill over there anyway, to put the porch.
I just have one comment too. I think whatever plans you guys decide to come back on, I would like to see something that limits or lowers the, the, the risk to the health of the tree as much as possible.
And if they're, if they're moving that building to the north, that accomplishes that in part.
Yeah, correct. So I think that's important, not only for fire safety, obviously for the neighbors' privacy, et cetera, and for, I think for the safety of the family that's gonna be purchasing this or building this building. Because you don't want that tree to go up in flames. We're a high-risk fire area, and it's, that's a risk, that tree's a risk.
By the way, the plans are beautiful.
Yes. It looks like a lovely project. We're, we're just, we're hung up on a detail right now. And we have to clear the code compliance.
If that tree does die, it's, it's a severe risk to both parties, to both, both properties.
All right, so.
A motion to continue until.
Until July nineteenth.
July nineteenth.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think we just discussed.
Yeah, I think we have, okay.
Call you for your input.
Put it to, put it to a vote as well, I need, we're gonna need. Sherry needs to call the roll and put it to a vote.
We have to vote on this motion. Right, Sherry, would you call the roll?
Quillisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, Starkweather.
Yes, terrific. So you have.
Go forth and solve the problem.
Sort of marching orders.
Can I just say that we wanna work with the new neighbor? That was a little bit mischaracterized. The meeting, first meeting was with all the neighbors that were involved in the project, not just the Bressers. And there were some questions. The second meeting started out with, well, we like.
This is not on the record, because I can't hear you.
Yeah, do you wanna come up?
It shouldn't be on the record, should it? The meeting closed.
I think we're done with the item.
We're very much still in a, a public meeting, so I'd either. Let, let's save it for another time, is what I suggest.
We can't reopen a public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys can go outside.
Let's do that.
Start your discussion.
Don't bring kids. All right, so we'll, we'll see that one again.
Such a mean.
All right.
That was a good catch.
Yeah, who knew?
I couldn't tell, but he called it out. The neighbor, neighbor called it out.
I asked a question of Maura, and she corrected me on the development standards, which I really appreciated.
Good job. Whatever, forgot his name. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on then to item four. And as a little background here, Commissioner Starkweather asked me if I would be the second person to request a discussion on the agenda of the size of the planning commission. And I agreed to be the second person. Similar to why a, a chair might say, for discussion purposes, I'll second that motion, if no one else will, and I think we ought to discuss it. The, the, the situation is, I believe, that when we first talked about the size of the planning commission, and I had very strong views about five versus seven, we did not know what other conditions might be applied to that by the city council. And so I felt it was worth discussing. So if you wanna take us, take us farther down the trail, Lucas.
Okay, so this is a request by Chair Quillisi and Commissioner Starkweather. And it's to discuss the size of the planning commission in terms of, this was first discussed back in March, but even rewinding it before that, in February, the city council provided each commission with an opportunity to have that discussion, and each commission did. In terms of whether that, that number should remain at five, or if there's an opportunity for seven. And then for each body to have that discussion piece. That's the framework in which we need to, and then obviously, in March, this body reviewed that matter and then took forward a recommendation to remain at five versus seven. This commission has been at seven and was at seven, I think, my first meeting, and then by the time I had my second meeting, it had been reduced to five. But to be fair, I think at that time, we may have had two vacancies, so we were already working and operating.
Had one vacancy.
One vacancy, okay. So in terms of, of five versus seven, in March, that was the discussion, took forward the recommendation to city council to remain at five. And that's really where our discussion needs to remain, within the numbers category and discussion.
Rather than the composition of in-city, out-of-city?
Correct. Those pieces were not a part of what this, what was this agenda.
Added after our recommendation to stay at five.
Unfortunately, I guess we didn't communicate very well, because I thought I was requesting the larger discussion about the composition and the appointments, and it got narrowed to just the numbers. But I think that they are related.
They're related, but unfortunately, with the way in which this agenda has been identified, we have to stay within the context of the number. Now, if you wanted to have that larger discussion, we could certainly, if the, if this body is wanting to, to move that discussion and make a recommendation that'd be heard at the next available meeting, that's certainly something that can be entertained. Obviously, it would require some discussion with this body, and then a recommendation to move forward, and then to set that date, obviously.
So the reason I brought the, the size of it, I, personally, I think the size we have now works great. I think the process by which we stagger appointments, which, you know, how we've operated, I think anybody who's watched us will say we are very strict about following the code, applying the facts. We've almost always come to consensus. We've worked in that way. So it, it bothers me that someone would want to change that for some other reason. But since we did, I wasn't actually at that meeting. I was on vacation that day, so I didn't vote. But I probably would've voted with you all, because we didn't know that this was happening. I had been told by at least one or two city council members that, oh, no, they're just gonna go with whatever each commission wants. And of course, it didn't turn out to be that. Turned out to be a much bigger change in everything. So my thought was that if we're gonna move to the direction in, in terms of the way things are appointed, which essentially would be, each commissioner could literally, when this ordinance is passed, eliminate any one of us and pick somebody new. That's how it reads now. This would happen at the election, no staggered appointments, if people didn't want them. It seems like, and we've reducing the number of out-of-city residents. So if you have seven, you can have two, which we've always had, actually for a long time, probably ten or fifteen years. That we might wanna consider asking the city council, if they're gonna change this, that we be able to go to seven. So we could still have two out-of-city residents. We can't do it here, but I have a proposal, if that were to happen, how we could transition, because we've never removed anybody from any commission before their term was out. And so if we went to seven, that would give options so that that wouldn't have to happen.
Okay, so five versus seven is what's on the table. I know you're giving some, some background.
I've given some reasons why we.
None, none of those pieces are up for discussion, with the exception of the five versus seven. If you're wanting to talk about those bigger pieces, the pieces that are beyond the five versus seven, that can be scheduled for another meeting. If you're wanting to just focus on the five versus seven, we can focus on the five versus seven and what that means. Because that's, that's really what the focus was. I know, I mean, Commissioner Starkweather, really, you weren't here, and I believe it was either three.
We were originally asked to decide on, it was simply the size.
Five versus seven.
Not the, not the composition, not the method of creating or.
And during.
Filling vacancies.
Right, and during that, during that discussion, the focus was five versus seven. Five, I remember that very specifically. Five seemed to make sense, because as a consensus, it seems like this commission, this body, seems to always arrive at, for the most part, a consensus.
Lucas, could you tell us, or maybe the audience can jump up, what steps will come next from the city council in terms of changing that ordinance?
I'd be happy to talk about it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're the expert.
Um, yes, so a couple of things. First of all, the ordinance hasn't been passed. There actually hasn't been an official public hearing about it, and it won't be on Tuesday night's agenda. All that is, that has been decided so far is that the, is that the Arts Commission and Parks and Rec can move up to seven. And you chose to stay at five, and so that's.
I think it's historic.
I'm, I'm sorry, historic, I'm sorry, historic, and not arts. Historic and Parks and Rec are both moving up to seven, thank you very much. That, at the time, when we were discussing that, that was all, that was on the table. And part of the conversation that came after that is how do we choose the other two commissioners? So the whole discussion about the structure of commissions and who is involved, whether or not they're in the city, all, all of those, all of those conversations took place when we were trying to discuss, discuss how to, how to, to write the, the policies about moving up to seven. So, so I want to alleviate any of your concerns. I know I am planning on speaking with every commissioner. We don't even have a public hearing notice in the paper. And we are going to do advertising so that everyone knows when we are bringing this conversation up for discussion again in a public hearing. So there's, nothing has been decided with regard to how the commissioners, how the commissions are structured and when they're appointed. And to my knowledge, at this point, nothing is changing so far. So, so, yes, go ahead.
There was an item on the last city council agenda that I waited to speak to, and of course, we didn't get to it. But my understanding from the discussion was, where, no, where was it? It couldn't have been that item, because we never got to that item.
Right.
But there was discussion about directing staff to come back with a draft ordinance. And that, that direction, I thought, had to do not just with the size of the commissions, but with their composition and with the means by which vacancies might be created and would be filled.
That is correct. And, and what we discussed at that meeting, when we were, we, when we realized that we weren't going to be able to get to that, that discussion item, what we just, what we discussed was that we wanted to give all commissioners an opportunity to, to know what was happening and what we were talking about. And also that, 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 that every, the conversations that we had had up to that point were just about drafting the ordinance, or just about having staff draft, draft language. And so we have not had an official public hearing around that ordinance.
Right.
So the one you're talking about, if I can clarify, because I've got the agenda packages. On May the twenty-third was when the city council had that discussion.
Two meetings ago.
Yes.
Yes, and asked the staff to come back with an ordinance. And they hadn't, it's my recollection of that motion, I don't have the, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but was that they kind of left it up to staff to determine this would go into effect.
There was, actually, there, there.
Very little on that.
There, there was no, no discussion on how it would be laid out. It, it was, it was just dra, draft, draft an ordinance, and then let us talk about what changes we wanna make. Let's talk about how this would be implemented. But, but to this point, there have been no decisions made on.
Or discussions.
Or discussions, really.
We take two readings of an ordinance to have something.
So the ordinance was, there was a draft ordinance from the staff that was presented, that was what we were gonna say. And that's when I said that the drafts ordinance proposed that the day after this is approved, every city council member could pick.
These were all things that we, we.
But you hadn't discussed any of that.
We had not discussed, and, and I, and I actually brought this up, I said, we need to discuss how we're gonna roll, if we do, if we do make these changes, we need to discuss about how we're going to roll this out. And, and, and what I can say is that I know that myself and the other council member who I've, who's my Brown Act buddy for this topic, that we are really invested in talking to every single one of the commissioners. And, you know, and I've, I've, I've spoken with, with many of them, not all of them, but, but, you know, given some of the feedback, I think we are going to have a really, a deeper discussion about this, so.
So if I could, we're getting into too much of what this topic was really meant. I appreciate the history and I appreciate some of the background. But if we're wanting to have that deeper discussion, it really needs to be scheduled for, for another meeting.
I think it would make sense.
It's not on the city council agenda for the twenty-seventh.
Yes, and I am not sure when it will be on the agenda next.
If they have, so the next meeting after that would be.
July eleventh, I believe.
July eleventh, which is before our meeting, so that would be the first time. If, if it's on that agenda and they actually have a more detailed discussion, we would have something better to respond to at that point.
Sounds like speculation at this point.
Yeah, but I understand.
But here's the thing, this.
So I would like to put it on as a potential, so you wanna, you don't wanna do anything with this?
Continue this to July eleventh?
To July eleventh.
I understand your, your concern that you would want to discuss this item based on the information that would be, we would talk about for the next item.
Well, it wouldn't be, it, it would be after the July eleventh. Ours would be the first and third Wednesdays, which would be the nineteenth, if I recall correctly.
So I would rec, I would move that we continue this discussion to.
July nineteenth.
But cover all aspects of the composition, the appointment, the terms, how this would start, so forth.
So, so number, the number and beyond is really what you're, you're referring to. Do I have a second?
I do, I do have a quick.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, before, oh, go ahead. Well, we can discuss the motion.
I was gonna say, before we vote, I wanted to ask a question.
We're gonna have discussion before we vote.
Specifically, so do we know why the Historic Commission and the Arts Commission went from five to seven? Like, there's a reason that they wanted to have seven.
I don't think it was the arts.
It's not the arts, it's the historic.
Historic, yes.
Historic and.
Historic and parks.
Parks, correct.
We have the, we have the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission here.
Yes, the number is completely on the table in terms of discussion. Beyond that, though, I will be strict on that.
So as the one person in the room that's actually been in, on the commissions longer than Chair Quillisi and been at every meeting that discussed on that, the HPC had always wanted, always voted to stay at seven. They were, with the districts put in place, they were moved to the five members just to be in, in sync with the districts, along with everybody else. However, one of the things that we highlighted. However, one of the things that we highlighted in our discussions when we were talking to that council that night is that last year, we were severely hampered in our abilities to get out and talk with the downtown histor- with the people in the downtown historic district.
Proposed.
The proposed local downtown historic district.
You didn't have enough members to do that.
We, we didn't. We had some ad hocks. One of the ad hocks was the main one that was functioning was myself, Gina, and our non-commissioner Craig Walker. Now is our commissioner. And so we've had, the three now became two. Gina and Craig worked together. So we, there was a lot of fine dancing and me tiptoeing on very tight lines in order for us to move along. But again, it was very difficult. As an example, Rick Bisaccia is now on our commission. Rick Bisaccia has been around for a long time. I went through the list with him, the people who didn't return my phone calls. I was told they went, they were old and don't like to have changes. And Rick Bisaccia, again, because he has been in the community and has actually worked for many of them. And so we have that ability to reach out to other individuals rather than, you know, I went there because I was the volunteer to do it, but no one knew me at first. So that's why we, we asked to go back to seven.
A quick question, was one of the reasons too, that you, it was difficult to form a quorum with, with five?
Let me take a deep breath. The difficulty in forming a quorum came about because there was a decision that took place that said that the HPC could not meet unless they had three commissioners, residential commissioners. Correct. Number three. So that was a decision that was made somewhere. And so we were precluded from meetings. We actually had with Valerie James leaving in October and then Jenny Prebor leaving in December, we actually ended up with two residents and one non-resident, this guy here. And I, I'm not going to get into the, all the detail we said, but we were told unless we had three commissioners, three resident commissioners on the commission, we could not meet at all. And so many people, there are other reasons that we didn't make it in this timeframe, didn't have enough business. I don't want people to think we didn't meet for this extended period of time just for that. There were other reasons. You know, I don't want, I'm trying to.
Yeah. And, and with seven, it's easier to for, form that quorum?
It all depends on the composition, I would think.
It's still.
It's still three, right? It's still three. We need four if you're.
When we had, when we had seven before, again, when the seven before went for, for decades, for a long time. We were able to form comp, able to form it. I will tell you, and I just went to Terry Hill's funeral today. He was the person I went to when that must have three. Having, it's always been that once you're on a commission, you were commissioner and that's what you wore. There was never a distinction between resident and non-resident. Once you were on the commission, you were on the commission to, to do what you do. Terry Hill used to joke that when they had offsite meetings for the HPC, they had to go to his house because he was one of the few people that were actually, you know, on the commission. So, so there seemed to be, we were one big happy group, you know, when we had those seven. We didn't have to worry about the four, the four and three. We just had to worry about having four people there.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. So.
Code reads differently now though, I think.
No, the code still, I'll read specifically what the code states.
Who's code? Their code or our code?
Municipal code.
Municipal code as it relates to Historic Preservation Commission.
But we're different. We have a long separate.
Correct. You are a different section of the code. So here for the Historic Preservation Commission, which is section four dash eight point oh three, second sentence reads, while it is preferred that all members of the commission have primary residence and be domiciled within the city, a minimum of three members of the commission must have primary residence and be domiciled within the city. All members must live within the area of, of interest as defined by the Ventura County Local Agency Formation Commission. Also, this is.
Was that written before they went from seven to five and it didn't get changed?
There was a revision that was made in September of 25th of 2020, ordinance 909.
Again, having been.
I don't have that, I don't have that ordinance in front of me.
Yeah.
But likely there's some revisions in there.
Okay.
Again, let me just clarify, having been on the commission, the HPC since September 14th, 2014, having been the museum rep before that, having been in the room before that. So it has always been in the code that there is, if there are seven, that four of them be residents, three of them be non-residents. Okay? So it's always been that guideline to try to work towards having a majority. But.
They're not required to have three non-residents. You could have up to three. Is that.
Up to three.
I see.
Up to three.
Is your, is your microphone on?
Oh, I think so. Yeah.
There we go.
I was leaning back. Sorry. Sorry.
We can't catch it if you're.
Okay, so can we address the plan?
So, so yeah, one time the three non-residents were Darwin McCready, the chair, Brian Akins, the vice chair, and Craig Walker, the previous vice chair. So, you know, those are the three.
Powerhouses. All, all, all outside the town.
Thank you.
So can I go back to the number and ours? Because back in 2019, my understanding from talking to people who were here then, they had a hard time filling all seven of those seats. The, the city, city council.
No. They had a hard time filling what?
Seven members. So they had absences.
Of the planning commission?
The planning, I'm talking about the planning commission now. Yes.
Okay.
So when it was changed, I, I understand that that was an issue, but you know, I wasn't there, but.
My first four years on the commission, there were seven members. After that, we had one resign, retire, whatever. We were down to six when the decision came to go to five by attrition. So we went from six to five when another planning commissioner either retired or resigned. And then we've had some more changes since. And we have these two new commissioners that have come in in the last year or so.
Well, those, those, back in 2019, when they established that ordinance, they had each commissioner, because they had five districts, well, four districts and a mayor.
Right.
They had an order of their appointments.
And still do.
And that has been followed. For an example, both Judy and I are in seats where the commissioners who passed this, Ryan, I mean Randy Haney and William Wyrick waited three years to be able to make an appointment.
We are still, we are still talking about stuff outside.
No, I'm talking about the numbers.
Size of the commission.
Talking about why you would want to have more or less. My only point about the.
Here's the thing, I, I've got to stop you again because we're getting into the realm of talking about more than just the five versus seven. We're really talking about composition in terms of how that relates, history associated with that. I get that. That's, that's reserved for a, a meeting where we actually have on the agenda that discussion and can have that larger discussion. Versus, for instance, what, what Brian was just talking about was the reason why they are intimately involved in going to seven. They see true value in it. Where when, when this body talked about it before, five is fine.
Yeah, the biggest problem would be if they changed the status from, from having two non-residents to only having one, which is proposed.
That I think is a discussion we should be having on July.
That's fine, but that affects, you know, our view of the number should be.
That's a deeper, that's a deeper discussion.
Okay, well, that's fine. I have no problem.
All right.
Do we need, do we need a motion to continue this item July 19th?
I thought we had a motion.
Well, we do.
And I thought Judy had seconded it.
I interrupted everything.
Commissioners, yeah. Trent had said, hold on.
Well, he was deliberating.
That's right.
We were deliberating. We brought up some help for the deliberation. I think at this point, we.
Call the question.
Call the question.
Sherry, let's vote on item four, please.
Quillcy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
All right. So we'll be back and have all this fun four weeks from now.
Maybe I'll learn some new strategies by being in England and Ireland and Scotland, the way they do things.
We know more about what the council has in mind.
Boy. Okay.
I'll have a grand wizard hat.
We now, we now have something to write in on July 19th.
I think we, we have two items to write in for July 19th. One is the item we just talked about. So actually we'll have.
Both of tonight's items.
Both of tonight's items. And I look forward to the item previous to that being addressed on both fronts.
So we don't have anything else.
Where it's going to land, but I can definitely tell you from a height standpoint that will be addressed.
So we don't have anything else yet, but we could theoretically have a third item?
Yeah, you know, I'm showing four pending items here, but I was just looking at the items and we have several items that are close, just not ready to go yet.
We need some more so we can have a long meeting.
What makes me a little bit nervous about just seeing the four here and then the five or six, so that I was also looking at yesterday and today, is remember we talked about a logjam two years ago and trying to get that addressed? Right now we have a logjam of.
In between.
Yeah, right now we have a logjam of items that are almost ready. I'm nervous that this is typically how planning works, unfortunately, is they all come unjammed at the same time.
Yeah.
And so we had that happen and we figured out solutions to that. I anticipate that we will do the same. We will find solutions to that.
There are a couple here that are obviously very complex. Those that haven't been on the commission for a long time will not remember 1440 Daly Road. But that was an extended conversation that we had on that single family house.
And you can expect the same thing.
The slope to Shelf Road.
And we have two commercial and one large affordable housing project.
The 320 Bryant is that two acre plot behind Condor Self Storage.
Yeah, the self-storage facility, exactly.
Oh, okay.
I am not opposed to having a special meeting if we need to.
Starting, starting the 11th?
No.
After.
After you get back.
Half of the 19th.
Realistically though, I, what makes me a little bit nervous, just to make this body aware, we're probably looking at into the August, September, where we may have to have a special meeting. Just because of the number of items that I anticipate.
Yeah, several of these are big enough. It'll be one item for the night.
Yeah, it could be that that's not the case, but I, I just want to give fair warning to the commission.
We don't want to go any longer than the city council went last time. Midnight.
I don't know that this is a competition.
That was really painful.
I, I do have. Just having fun. One question about 320 Bryant Street. I thought I had read that when a new project comes to the city by application, that it's a ministerial decision if it's 100% affordable housing under the technical legal definition of affordable housing. So why would it come to the planning commission?
Not all ministerial.
Let's, let's avoid talking about the project before it's in front of us, is what I would say.
From a processing standpoint, it would come before this body. We'll, we'll get into the details. You'll see.
Right. Everything will be explained in due time.
Explain why we have to decide something when we get there.
Yes.
Okay.
Also identifying the parameters in which the commission will be boxed into, unfortunately. So.
All right. I think next.
With, yeah, with that, there's, there's no other.
No, no. Next, next we hear from our city council liaison.
Oh, yes. I'm heading to go already.
May or may not be something more you want to say.
No, actually I was going to speak on the topic that we already discussed, but I also, while I'm here, I just want to thank you all for your amazing service. It's really been great to be your liaison and I really appreciate all that you're doing.
You watch, you watch this group of five and I'll leave myself out, but the other four for sure, they're thoughtful, they're detailed, and they pay attention to every word on every page.
I know Judy's an editor.
How, how could you, how could you want more from a planning commission?
You really are wonderful. Thank you.
How much longer do we get you?
That indicated there was a gas meter was.
Yeah, it's a quarter by quarter.
I think this is technically my, I'm not sure. I'm not 100% sure, but I think so. So anyway, thank you. It's been great to, great to be with you. And I, I'm sure you, you know, I'll be, I'll be back.
You can still watch us. It's great television. Not as good as yours, but.
Yeah, not nearly as good.
I hesitate to ask, is, is there anything that any commissioner wants to bring up?
Let me make a short report on the housing committee, very short. Of course, we had a cosponsored a forum on the 11th, I think of June. And we had four different organizations. I thought it was a very enlightening and interesting. We had Councilman Lang was there, along with Souza Francina, gave a little report on her homelessness status. So yeah, I thought it was excellent. And now Judy and I and the Ohio Democratic Club are working on a second forum, we call it Housing Insecurity Series. And I just sent something out. You probably would have gotten it, but hadn't had time to look at it yet. There was an article in the LA Times about the study that looked at the cause of homelessness in, in California. Basically, it's lack of housing, the primary cause. And so I actually contacted the organization that did the study. And the woman there claimed she's going to get a representative from that study to outline it.
To the next meeting?
No, no, at, yeah, at the July 30th.
July 30th.
30th. And then I've invited like three or four other housing groups that we didn't get to.
Cabrillo could come back to talk.
Cabrillo could come back and talk about this one. And we have an organization called Turning Point. We have the County Housing Authority and possibly the County Housing Trust Fund. But the idea would be if we can get the speaker to kind of give their overview of the report and then maybe have a panel discussion of solutions and so forth that could fit the Ohio Valley.
Context is very important. Yeah.
Quick question in your, in your, in the meeting that you had, because I know you were, it was countywide, you know, you guys were looking countywide, not just.
Not countywide, valleywide.
Well, I think you were looking at both, right? Valleywide, countywide?
No, no.
Some of, some of the, some of the projects like Mesa is, draws from the whole county.
Yeah.
They, so, yes.
Well, I was just curious if they provided any sort of numbers on what the county's doing as far as, you know, units. Like I know Camarillo's got a bunch of stuff going on. Oxnard does, Ventura does. So, you know, those cities have a lot of large projects that are taking place.
I don't know that there's any one organization that actually pulls all that together. We did get some information like Dignity Moves.
Ventura Housing Authority should.
The Housing Authority might, but they're more, they have different, I don't know if they would be able to report on what Turning Point or Dignity Moves or Habitat or all these other organizations. So it would be nice if we had a comprehensive.
Yeah.
Putting all these, you know, it's like a complicated Sherlock Holmes. They figure all the organizations, what resources, which ones you can apply to.
I just, just the other day saw a new project going up on Lewis Road in Camarillo. It's 30 odd apartments there that's all affordable.
Yeah, and I think the old Lamira Plan.
Actually, someone asked that question. You did. Asked them the question about funding. Oh my God, it was so complicated. The answer had my head spinning. Of all the different, you know, funding sources and so forth. And it's kind of like looking at the, the general assembly or whatever it's called, the, the state, you know, legislature. And you do look at each, a couple of weeks, what bills have been put forward. Your, your head spins trying to keep track of it all.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we don't have a enough staff or a full-time housing person to.
Yeah.
Yeah. We voluntarily do it ourselves.
We do.
Anything from the director?
I think I've said enough tonight. I would say this though, from a, from a housing element standpoint, from a general plan update standpoint, we are still moving forward. We are meeting with those agencies and we are meeting with a consultant on a, on a bi-weekly basis regarding the general plan. So it's, we're still making progress and we're looking. So it's, we're still making progress and we're looking at some aspects as we work through some of the things that have come from, down from council, so.
Now, now with our housing element, I know we're working with HCD, is that, and that's still happening? It's still, that process is still kind of going back and forth to figure out.
Absolutely, yep.
And also, part of the, what we're trying to do with our housing committee and educating the public and leaders is so that they have a better understanding when they're looking at the housing element.
Yeah.
And what needs to be done, you know, what the barriers are, what the possibilities are.
Yep.
It's complicated.
What legally affordable housing means, because it's all perceived differently.
Yes, and, um.
Yeah, I don't want to get into too much of it, but I would say this. In terms of what, what was the perception and understanding from a processing standpoint for the fifth cycle leading into the sixth cycle, it's a difference of eight years and it's a difference of quite a few.
Very different rules, yeah.
Correct.
It's like a different world.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, from our city attorney, is there any other, any other, don't you dare do, do that again kind of stuff you want to lay on us?
No, yeah, I just, uh, as Lucas mentioned, uh, or I think, uh, the chair inquired about, um, there's some big projects coming, uh, it looks like that'll come before the commission. So, um, we'll, we're preparing to, to brief you on, on all those.
Hang on to your hats, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a lot of stuff to, to go over, which will be fun, I think.
So you'll be able to obviously advise us, you know, what flexibility we have under the code with these, with these, um, builders remedy projects that are coming before us, I take it?
If there are any builders remedy projects that come before the city, we will advise you on them.
Okay, yeah, I, if you, if you have, uh, not 25 words, but maybe 50 words, uh, that you could tell us about SB 330 sometime, I would appreciate it.
Sounds good.
There being no other obvious business before the commission at 8:34, we're adjourned. Thank you all very.
Good work.
Bye. Thank you so much.
I'll be in touch.
Thanks, Brian.